This Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource Commission's meeting is being called to order.
So that's it, that's my cue. Thank you. I'm going to call the meeting of the Historic Preservation Cultural Resource Commission, our special meeting for Wednesday, January 17th, to order at 6:32 PM. We'll start with a Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Weeks. So if we could now have the Recording Secretary, please call the roll.
Chair Lubacek?
Here.
Vice Chair Maharo?
Here.
Commissioner DeVint?
Here.
Commissioner Urena?
Yeah.
And Commissioner Weeks?
Here.
Tonight's meeting is live streamed on cable channel three and on our online platforms. To prevent any overlaps in comments, each Commissioner will be called upon to speak. Our first agenda item this evening is the public comment. This is a time set aside for members of the public to address the Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource Commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the commission cannot answer any questions or take any action until such time as the matter may appear as an item on a future agenda. If you wish to address the commission, please fill out a speaker card that's available on the back table. Once completed, kindly submit the card to the Recording Secretary. Speakers will be called to the podium one by one. Each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak. Have we received any public comment for this evening?
No, Madam Chair, we have not, but if we can also check with the audience to see if there's any speakers.
Seeing none, I will take us to the second item on the agenda, which is approval of the minutes. These are the minutes of the September 13th, 2023 HPCRC meeting. Are there any comments on the minutes?
No comments.
If there aren't any, could I get a motion to approve? Thank you. Vice Chair Maharo, in a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Weeks. Do we have a roll call vote on the minutes?
Okay. Commissioner DeVint?
Aye.
Commissioner Urena?
Aye.
Vice Chair Maharo? Commissioner Weeks?
Aye.
Chair Lubacek?
Aye.
Thank you.
The unanimous vote, we'll go to the third item on the agenda, which is discussion or review placement of Ernie Salis' plaque. And we're going to get a report from Director Perez.
Good evening, Chair Lubacek and Commissioners. Thank you for having me here tonight. In April 2021, the Native Sons of the Golden West gifted a plaque in honor of Ernie Perez Tudames Salis, late chief of the Kish Nation. The plaque recognizes the historical significance of the tribe in building the San Gabriel Mission and helping develop the local area. Late Chief Ernie and his family and tribal nation have had historical influence on Southern California for three centuries. As such, he and the Kish Nation were selected for recognition. His son, Andy Salis, would like to donate this plaque to the city to be installed. The plaque size is 19 inches by 12 inches. Staff recommends placement of the plaque in Plaza Park near the Chapman Mill Race. If approved, public works staff will build a foundation to install the plaque as they have other plaques in Plaza Park. Any report is a photo of the plaque as well as a Google map showing the proposed location. Staff is seeking approval from the commission for placement of the plaque. If so approved, staff requests a recommendation to the City Council for final approval. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Rebecca. I'll go in order. Commissioner DeVint, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
Commissioner Weeks?
No questions or comments, thank you.
Commissioner Urena?
No questions or comments, thank you.
Vice Chair Maharo?
I just want to say I'm grateful that they are donating this plaque. I think it's a great addition to our future historical walks. I think it could be very beneficial. And again, honoring him, honoring the chief, I think it's, and the location, I think, is ideal as well.
I do have a couple of questions. I'm curious, and I should have walked over earlier today, but what are some of the other plaques, do you know, that are in Plaza Park?
I don't know. I did not do my due diligence and go over there to, I know that there's some space there, but there are some other plaques that are there. The recommendation to include it around the Mill Race is that there are some other plaques that are kind of haphazardly, I'll say, placed in Plaza Park. And my concern is always just having it be a trip hazard. We do have events there. Obviously, the mission has large groups of children that come and utilize the park after their mission visits, and so having something that at least is placed kind of next to something, so it's not out in the middle of nowhere.
Right. And that was actually my next question, because my recollection was that there wasn't a cohesive location where plaques were located. Is there any intention to actually make more of a memorial space for people that we want to honor and recognize?
I, we have not had that discussion. We've not had that discussion about having a larger location. That has come up as discussion. We may end up having the veterans, a veterans memorial placed in Plaza Park, which would lend itself to there being a little more cohesion. But I don't know if any of the plaques that are currently there would be relocated.
Thank you. And then I just also wanted to acknowledge the Native Sons. They do a wonderful job, I think, of seeking out all facets of California history and making sure that it's marked, which is really the key to preservation. If we don't know who people are or what events transpired, we lose them. And so I think it's a really wonderful service that they provide. Did we receive, we received public comment on this item? Could we have the public comment?
No public comment was received for this item. My apologies. There was a public comment received in support from Chastity Jennings Nunez. Ms. Nunez says, "Chief Ernie Salis, prior to tonight's HPCRC meeting, there was a meeting at the Land Acknowledgement Statement Advisory Committee. This committee is made up of members of the HPCRC and here commissions. Our purpose is to create a statement that confirms a clear and ongoing commitment by the city government to respect and acknowledge the native peoples of San Gabriel. It has been a complex task that started two years ago and that I hope to see completed this year. We have had valuable, enlightening conversations with many stakeholders, as well as input from each committee member and city staff. And while it has, at times, been difficult to decide on the next best steps, one of the areas that has received unanimous agreement is that we want the land acknowledgement statement to be a beginning, not the end goal. We expect the land acknowledgement statement will open the way to active dialogue with the descendants of the first peoples of this area and recognition and education about their significant and ongoing impact in the place we know as San Gabriel. My hope is that the discussion about the location for this plaque is just the beginning and that the plaque will only be one stop on a directory of many an audio tour developed by the City of San Gabriel celebrating indigenous people."
Thank you. Are there any public comment from the public?
Hi, Rebecca.
Hello, good evening. Senya, hi, how are you? My name is Andy Salis, and I'm the son of Chief and Spiritual Leader Ernie Salis. I'm, again, very honored that we're able to, I mean, we've been working with the city in hopes that we could finally establish this plaque to honor my father, who was a big, not a supporter of his city. This is, this was his city. Not only was it his city, through my father, as I mentioned several times, we are the indigenous people of this area, of the LA Basin. This was the frontier here, that my dad always called the frontier. These are the opening gates of San Gabriel. Through my father, we descend from the village of Sibah Savagna, which is over in La Misión Vieja, which is in Whittier Narrows. That's the location where the San Gabriel Mission was going to first be established. But as it got washed away, our families, our tribes, our people from those areas were brought up here to this village, which was called Tovas Cagna. This is where we resided. This is where it all began, when the Europeans, actually, when they arrived there in La Misión Vieja, but this is where it all began. This is where my great-great-grandfathers, as we became mixed, mixtised with the Spanish, my grandfathers were the Perez Nietos family, Rancho Los Nietos, in Santa Fe Springs, California, in Whittier, in that area. There's an area called Los Nietos. It's named after my great-grandfathers. They were the men that received 360,000 acres. Juan Crispin Perez Nietos and Manuel Perez Nietos. They were managers of the San Gabriel Mission. They are buried in the front doors of the San Gabriel Mission as you walk in with the Padres that were buried there. They were the owners of 360,000 acres of California. Huntington Beach, Seal Beach, Bolsa, Long Beach, Los Alamitos, Gardena, Bellflower, Norwalk, Los Coyotes, Santa Fe Springs, Whittier, all the way up to the foothills of the San Gabriel, mountains here. When the Mexican government came from Baja California and ended up right here in San Gabriel, from Whittier Narrows into San Gabriel, and then down into Los Angeles, again, we became mixed. Those 44 families that came walking, that every day there's an event out here, every year, there's an event, the Pobledores, that walk from here to LA. Out of those 44 families, the Rodriguez and Noriega family became my family because it was their granddaughter who married Juan Crispin Perez Nietos, or Rancho Los Nietos. Well, they had a grandson, and that grandson, Jesús Perez Nietos, is the one that married my indigenous side. And I come from a very, through my father, a very prominent indigenous side. My grandfather, Nicholas, great-great-grandfather in 1785, was Nicholas Joseph, who led the revolts here against the Spanish for the way they were being treated. So the stories you hear about Torpedina and the uprising, my great-great-grandfather was the instigator who set out the plan to take over the San Gabriel Mission. The rest of his family resided right there across the street where Smith Park's at. That was his ranch, that was his land. The schools district, that was their property. I've shared that with, on the maps and information that we provided. That's my family history. My father, again, as a young boy, lived in San Gabriel, or we call it today San Marino, at the San Marino, at the Huntington Library, where my dad lived with General George Patton. George Patton is the grandson of Benjamin D. Wilson of Mount Wilson and Ramona Yorba of Yorbalinda. So being from a prominent family that has been all a part of these governments that came and settled here, this plaque and the information on the plaque does not only commemorate my father, but it commemorates the history that is untold here in San Gabriel, which is very important, I think, to generations to come. Because I do presentations, I go to schools, I reach out to children, you know, I tell them about if they know the Pan family, and if they know, everybody's still like, who's that? They don't know. But we educate them about this prominent history here of San Gabriel, because, ladies and gentlemen, this was the beginning, right here. And it's important to tell that history out there. So everybody that comes and sees, you know, the mill, the grapevine, and just to read the history and get that understanding and connection of California history here of the indigenous, Spanish, Mexican, and American, when you've got people still here alive that are able to share and tell that history, it's a good thing. It's great, I think it's great for all of us. So I hope that we can work together on behalf of my father, behalf of our tribe, behalf of our ancestors, both living and dead. Again, thank you, and I'm very honored to be here.
Thank you so much, Andy. Are there any other comments from the Commissioners?
Thank you for that presentation. I enjoy hearing that history, and just today, someone at my office mentioned that revolt at lunchtime. So random that that's... Thank you.
May I say, I'm sister to Andy, and Ernie was also my father.
Would you like to come up and speak to the microphone so we can, we're streaming the meeting? That way, people who are listening in would be able to hear.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nadine Salis. I am vice chair of our Kish-Gabriel and Obana Mission Indians. And it's an honor, yes, it's an honor to be up here, knowing that possibly that we would be able to have this memorial of our tribe and of our father, who worked diligently for our people, years and years and years, just trying, knowing that we were who we are, and just speaking for us all and wanting to see some kind of good life come up for us or some acknowledgement of the history here in San Gabriel, which is a gem. It's a gem of the city here. But ironically, I just wanted to say that my father passed away in 2021. We mentioned this before, so maybe people may have heard this before, a week away from mom. And ironically, I think the spirit, well, I know, the spirit of our father is with us because on Friday is his three years that he's passed away. So being here today gives me in my heart a great honor, if this memorial, you know, would take place, for everything that my father has done for our family, our tribe, our people, our ancestors, our elders. He worked diligently, and he's well-known in the community. I, you know, he worked hard with everybody. And up until his last days, when he was on a timer or something like that, he'd say, oh, no, no, I have a lot to talk about. I don't go by that. And everybody started laughing, but he didn't understand how it had to be nowadays. But Dad was very old school, and he wanted to get his point across, and I miss them both very much, and this would be an honor, but it's just so close to the time of his passing, which would be on Friday, his anniversary, or their anniversary. So thank you so much for everything or anything that can be done in this regard. It would be an honor, an honor that my heart is just filled with right now. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I apologize, I jumped. Are there any other public comment before we close public comment? All right, so seeing none, I'll close public comment at 6:50, and now I will ask my other Commissioners, unless Vice Chair Maharo would like to add anything. Are there any further comments?
Yeah, I'd like to just add my own thoughts on this. The genealogy that you just provided to us and the development of this area and your family history is definitely priceless, and I think it would be a privilege for us to move forward with the monument. I'm really moved by what, you know, your history and how you presented the whole situation here, so thank you so much for being here to move this.
Thank you all very much.
Any other comments? So I believe what's needed from us is a recommendation, a vote. So we need to make a recommendation to approve the placement of the plaque, and then this would go on to City Council for final approval. So if I could have a motion?
My motion?
Thank you, Commissioner Urena, a second?
Second.
We had to race for second. I think it was Commissioner Weeks. So if we could have a roll call vote on this, please?
Sure. Commissioner DeVint?
Aye.
Commissioner Weeks?
Aye.
Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Urena?
Aye.
Vice Chair Maharo?
Aye.
And Chair Lubacek?
Aye.
Thank you.
And before I move to the next item, I realize this is not the topic that we are voting on tonight, but I would love to be part of a broader conversation about how we're memorializing in our public spaces, so that we do get a more cohesive, coherent, particularly if veterans are looking for recognition, but I think there's a great opportunity to tell the history more fully and intentionally, and I think it would be good to have a broader discussion about that. So with that, brings us to item four, the Citywide Historic Resources Report, Phase Two. And we will have a presentation from Andrew Goodrich of Architectural Resources Group.
Good evening, Commissioners. It's great to be back before you all tonight. So the purpose of tonight's presentation, I'm going to try and keep it pretty brief, but I just, we are starting with Phase Two of the Citywide Historic Resources Survey, which is exciting for all of us. So I just wanted to kind of walk you through what our tasks look like and kind of what we've been doing and what is next. So that's, that's pretty much what that is, agenda. So I'm just going to start by providing a quick overview of Phase Two. So as you all know, Phase One was completed last year. Just to provide a quick recap, it involved a reconnaissance survey of the entire city and an intensive survey of individually eligible and non-parcel resources. Districts were preliminarily surveyed. So in Phase One, we identified where districts are located and what the approximate boundaries are, but districts were not fully evaluated or documented at that time. So for Phase Two, we're basically picking up where we left off, and we're focusing exclusively on recording and evaluating districts. So just to go into a little bit more detail, we'll be completing evaluations for each of the 11 districts that were identified during Phase One. And they're up on the screen here on this map. So as you recall, there were nine historic districts, which are eligible for listing, and two planning districts, which are technically not eligible for listing but merit special consideration in planning. So for each district, we will be conducting extensive background research to develop a fuller understanding of its history, confirming district boundaries. So we touched on this during Phase One, but depending on what we find on our focus research for Phase Two, it is possible and quite likely that some of the preliminary boundaries identified in Phase One may be adjusted a bit. We don't think there's going to be any huge changes, but it is possible that a couple parcels or a block or two blocks here or there might get added or deleted, and we'll be sure to keep you all posted as that moves forward. Once the boundaries are finalized, then our team will go back out into the field and record each district. Within each district, all properties will be documented and assigned a status, so they'll be classified as either a contributor or a non-contributor. Contributors, generally speaking, are consistent with the context and the character of the historic district. Non-contributors were generally built outside of the period of significance, so if it's like a newer house within a 1920s or 30s neighborhood, that would typically be a non-contributor. Non-contributors also include properties that have been extensively altered. So once our field work is done, everything will be compiled into a written report, similar to what was done for Phase One, with DPR forms included as an appendix. For each district, there will be, so for the DPRs, there'll be a district record for each district. This is essentially a cover sheet, if you will, so it describes the district as a whole. And then there will be a primary record for each property within the district that includes a brief description, as well as its contributor or non-contributor status. So the goal is that if you own property or live within a district, you can really easily navigate to your particular property and see where the cards fall. So next, I'll spend a few minutes discussing what our team has been up to. So the project kicked off late last year, right after Thanksgiving. Since then, our team at ARG has been working mostly behind the scenes. So we've reviewed the district findings from the Phase One survey, just to get up to speed. And then we've also been conducting focused research into the development history of each district. So our research this time around for Phase Two is really focused on districts, whereas last time it was for the city as a whole with an emphasis on individual resources. So all of our attention, if you will, our energy efforts are being directed toward this district research. So I wanted to just share kind of a small sample of what we found with you. One of the first things that we've done was we pulled the original tract maps for each district. Sometimes districts are kind of neatly located within one tract. More often, they are, you know, encompass pieces of multiple tracts. But this information is available online, it's all digitized, which is really great. It's available at the LA County Department of Public Works. And these maps really, they include all sorts of very helpful information, so dates that tracts were subdivided, names of original owners and developers, and the original layout of streets and parcels. This helps us kind of understand how these districts originated, and they are also helping us nail down some of these boundaries that are in question. So we've looked at other types of maps as well, maps, I personally love maps, I think they're fascinating, but they're very helpful to the study of historic resources and particularly districts. So pictured on the screen are just a few of the maps that we've, we found that I thought were really interesting. So we found historic land use and zoning maps at the Huntington Library for San Gabriel and surrounding areas. Sandborne maps, this is kind of pictured the bottom center there. These are extremely valuable for historic resource surveys. And what they are, were fire insurance maps that really include an extraordinary amount of detailed information about particular buildings and really help to chart the progress of how these areas developed over time. There is also an extensive collection of historic aerial photographs. There are a number of sources, but one of the ones that we always fall back on is available at UC Santa Barbara, their library, their geospatial collection. And that map, or it's an aerial image, excuse me, on the bottom right there is one of the maps that we found. Again, these really are a very valuable resource for us. They kind of provide a real-life snapshot of what these areas looked like at a particular moment in time. We've also dug kind of deep into the trenches of newspaper archives. There's a ton of relevant information out there in local publications, and we've found a lot of very useful and interesting information about some of these historic districts. Pictured on the screen is a representative sample of some of what we found. So you can see there's kind of a range of materials, there's classified ads, there's articles describing when tracts were opened for sale, and then there's some full-page display ads that were prominently featured in local newspapers and often are accompanied by really great photos and graphics. So these materials, we've looked at a variety of sources. We found information at the LA Times, the LA Evening Express, Daily News, Pasadena Evening Post, Pasadena Star News, and various other regional publications. So finally, I wanted to go over the project schedule, show you where we are in the process and what is next. So this chart, so it's kind of the same chart we've used for the entire survey project, but this shows the overall project timeline for Phase Two. The red arrow at the bottom shows where we are right now in relation to that timeline. So as you can see, we're relatively early in the project, we're well into the research phase. Our next step will be to digest all of our research findings and take a close look at the district boundaries. and take a close look at the district boundaries, as I mentioned. At the end of this month, we will be sharing our recommendations with staff and then working to finalize those boundaries. Once the boundaries are completed, or finalized, excuse me, our team will head back out into the field to document each district. We'll be collecting information about the general characteristics of each district, so things like layout, orientation, tract features, street trees, street lamps, those kinds of things. And then, we'll also be collecting information about each property within each district. So, an architectural description, year of construction, and most importantly, whether it's a contributor or a non-contributor. Finally, this information will be compiled into a survey report, which will have DPR forms included as an attachment. This will be available in the summer months. And the, the goal is to have everything wrapped up by about July of this year. One thing I did want to mention that's not on the slide is outreach. We did conduct some pretty extensive outreach for Phase One of the survey. Part of that outreach, as, as part of that outreach, people did share with us information about areas, neighborhoods, potential districts that mattered to them. So, we have all of that information, which is great. For Phase Two, we will be working with staff, with Jen and Sam and their team, to really develop an outreach program that is meaningful for anyone interested in the project, but also particularly those who live within districts. And so, we'll be working, we, we're still thinking about kind of what exactly that will look like, but we do want it to be meaningful and useful and relevant to people. So, we'll be sure to keep you posted as we have more information. So, I was going to move into Q and A, but I did want to switch gears quickly a little bit and spend a few minutes about a really remarkable woman from San Gabriel, Maria Lopez de Lothar. So, last November, ARG was contacted by a reporter, her name was Yvonne Condes. She's a freelance writer, and she was writing a story for Delos, which is a platform hosted by the LA Times that focuses specifically on Latino culture and identity in Southern California. So, Ms. Condes was researching important figures in Mexican-American Los Angeles history who made significant contributions, but whose legacies have kind of either been overshadowed or, or in many cases, simply ignored. And during her research, she came across Maria Lopez de Lothar, whose family home is in San Gabriel, is still standing, and one was, one of the properties identified in the Phase One survey. So, that's kind of how this all came to being. So, this, this seems like a really good opportunity to spend a few minutes to talk about Lopez de Lothar and her many, many achievements. So, just to give a little bit of information about her, she was born Maria Lopez. She was born in San Gabriel in 1881 and was raised in a small adobe house on Santa Anita Street, kind of on the west side of the Mission. Her parents were immigrants from Mexico. She, along with her two sisters, graduated from what was then called the Los Angeles State Normal School, and is now UCLA, and became a teacher. She also earned degrees from UC Berkeley, USC, and Columbia. That's a lot of, lot of degrees. At the time, which was the very early 20th century, it was pretty uncommon for women to pursue higher education. And so, makes it all, the more remarkable that Maria received not one, not two, but three different degrees. So, Maria worked for many years as a teacher. She was one of relatively few instructors to be fluent in both English and Spanish and possessed a skill set that most of her peers did not have. One of my favorite kind of anecdotes is she was actually hired by the LA Board of Education at one point to teach their teachers how to correctly say Los Angeles. Many of them came from the Midwest or places back east. And there are all sorts of crazy pronunciations out there. People would say Los Angles, Los Angeles, like, it was kind of, kind of nuts. So, they, they brought her in as a native Spanish speaker to, to teach people how to appropriately say it. She was also a prominent figure in the women's suffrage movement. In 1911, she traveled across Southern California, passing out flyers on women's rights to vote and giving speeches in both English and Spanish. Her speeches were known for being very passionate and very engaging. She tried to convince Spanish-speaking men in the state that women should also have the right to vote. In October 1911, California women did win that right to vote, but only by the slimmest of margins. Interestingly, in San Francisco, which today is considered kind of the, the heart of progressivism in California, they actually voted against the women's suffrage. But it passed by a thread in the Los Angeles area, and that's really attributed to Maria's activism and engagement with Southern California Spanish-speaking community. So, she really, she was an activist, a suffragist, an educator. She was really a Renaissance woman. She did all sorts of things. She learned how to fly a plane and drive an ambulance, which is incredible. During World War I, she traveled to France, where she tended to wounded soldiers. One night, the hospital where she was working came under siege. And in an act of bravery, she pulled wounded soldiers from the building and steered them to safety. This actually won her accolades from the French government for her, for her bravery. After the war, she returned to the United States. She married a man named Hugh Lothar, which is where that last name comes from, Lopez de Lothar. She and her husband returned to the Lopez family adobe in San Gabriel, on Santa Anita Street, in about 1920. Maria taught at UCLA until she retired in 1948. She lived in the family adobe until 1965, at which time she sold it to the Mission and then moved to Orange County, where she spent the rest of her time until her death in 1977. So, these are just some images. On the left side, you have kind of a then and now of the adobe. You can see it looks very similar to how it historically did. It's really remarkable that it's still there. It's truly a, it's a resource that, you know, as a consultant working throughout Southern California, it's something you just don't see very much, these adobe houses, and especially when associated with a fascinating person. And then, on the right, this is kind of just the, the cover art and then a link to Yvonne Condes's article. If you have the chance, if you haven't already, it's a super interesting read. It's very, it's such an interesting story, very, and very relevant to the history of San Gabriel. So, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, either about the survey or about Maria Lopez de Lothar. Thanks so much.
If you could just wait till we get to public comment, that keeps us following the rules. I know that that's against, against how your father would do this, but, but just for process, when we have our public comment, I would love for you to speak. Thank you. So, at this juncture, I'll take any comments, questions from the Commission that you have for Andrew, and I'll just go again in order. So, Commissioner DeVrent?
No comments other than the, you know, just some great finds in here. You know, the, the articles of the areas that are, you know, that were, the ads in the Los Angeles Times or whatever newspapers there were, and then, of course, this. This is really, really interesting stuff. We can't wait to read the article.
Commissioner Weeks?
No questions. Once again, it's a great presentation of the development of, of your project and the information that you come up with and provide to us. Thank you, thank you very much.
Commissioner Urena?
No questions. Just a comment again, like everybody else has been saying, it's great work. I was always horrible in history in my youth, but had I been learning things like this, I may have been more interested when I was younger. But I enjoy every moment of your presentation.
Vice Chair Maharo?
Yes, thank you for that presentation. I do have a question. The images that you've shown are fascinating throughout the entire presentation. Are these accessible to the public? Do we have them, or is this just your presentation? Have they been, are they on our website?
These are in our research files, but we could certainly work with staff to make them available. They're, they kind of come from a variety of sources. So, a lot of these are newspaper clippings. We have all these images and maps. So, some, some, they come from a variety of sources. Some are available online. Others are kind of curated through our, our research files, but we couldn't.
Could your files be shared?
Yes, yeah.
With the public?
Yeah, we could do that.
That would be wonderful, because I've discussed the survey quite extensively with neighbors, and it's always fascinating to me. We drive these streets, we walk these streets to know what's there, what happened there. It's always fascinating. So, I think, I think they'd be interested. I think the public would certainly be interested in seeing that. Thank you.
And then, my question was very similar to that, Vice Chair Maharo. In the, the report that's finally put together at the end of Phase Two, will there be a bibliography, an archive of documents, something that, that lives with the research that you've done? So, in the same vein?
Yes, yes. And I, I think, you know, we, we certainly want this to be something that people can access and use. So, we'll work with staff to, to make sure that happens. One thing, too, that I remember from Phase One was we had a quick conversation about our, our maps, our reconnaissance survey maps, and kind of making maybe those part of the city archive or, you know, making them available, so we can explore that as well.
I am also a big fan of maps, so the more that are available, the better. And then, my other comment was just in terms of considerations for outreach in Phase Two, San Gabriel Historical Association is often looking for speakers. And I think that this would be a really fascinating presentation to share with them and their members. And I would not be surprised at all to find that there are original owners of some of the, the homes inside these tracts that you're, you're researching. But it might be a nice, a nice way to get word out to them. And I think they would happily welcome the opportunity to have such an interesting presentation. Just as a thought. So, now, I will turn to public comment on this item.
Your name is Andrew DeVrent?
Yes.
My name is Andrew.
Good name.
So, I wanted to, I wanted to really, and I want to piggyback off of what Senya said there. I wanted to see how maybe if you needed some help with, with the adobe. It's because that family that settled there, Juan Lopez, was also a miembro of the San Gabriel Mission. That family married into the Baldurines, which was my grandpa Joe's wife, Mary Baldurine, who lived right behind Mission Playhouse in those little apartments for the rest of their life. She's gone now, but they're actually the descendants to the Lopez and the Baldurine family. So, a lot of that history that you're asking, I have archives with me, history in my office, or again, my, my second office, which is my dad's old home, on the history in connection to that Lopez adobe. And, and talking about preservation, and I just, I know you guys want to move forward with your meeting tonight, but I've been up in, in, in the past in meetings when my dad was, was alive. And we, we always used to talk about protecting and preserving the house that General Patton lived in, in San Marino, at the Huntington Library, that he was born in, that was brought over to 808 Del Mar. That house was given to my great aunt Sally Solidad and my uncle Juan, because they were the servants to General George Patton, who Patton's parents were Benjamin D. Wilson, like I mentioned earlier, and Yorba, Ramona Yorba. But the house still sits there. And we, through the family, although there hasn't been changes or anything done to it, we've always, you know, when, when there's meetings, we want to bring it up that, on how we could work to continue to preserve that property, you know, from being destroyed in the, when we're no longer here, to keep it safe. Because that is the house that Patton was born in, at Huntington, at the Huntington, over at the Huntington Library. My great uncle Juan Perez, who's from the Perez Nietos family, mixed. He's, he was a native Gaberleno here. He actually burned in the original property or the house there. There's, if you go back to the back of 808, there's the foundation where he fell asleep while he was smoking a cigarette, and he burned the house down with him in it. So, the Pattons came and bought that house in the 30s, and they gave it to them because of their, being the nannies and servants to, to Patton. It was a gift that was given to him. That location, and another location that, and they're basically, there are two trees that were over by the old Richardson Ranch. If you're familiar with the Richardson Ranch, it was down over by Mission Road and Walnut Grove, where there's now these little condos. There was an old ranch there. Across the street lived the Callahans, across the street. Those particular oak trees that you see there need to be preserved. They don't give actual corn, acorn, but they were in connection with the grapevine because of the cork that was used of that oak tree for the bottles of the wine for the Spanish year, for the Mission. So, those are two other items that, that we also, my father, when he was here, he would always bring it up, you know, that he wanted to protect and preserve those particular sites. There's other sites. Again, the other thing with the plaque is the San Gabriel, the military men from San Gabriel that fought here, from San Gabriel, my uncles, a lot of the Gaberleno Indians, they're on that plaque, and he used to be at the golf course. It's another thing that my dad was, when he was alive, always pushing for, to see the, to get it back there to commemorate those men that fought with Mr. Panchito, that was here at Panchito's restaurant. He was one that fought with Patton also. So, those are things that my dad always had on his, on his plate, that he wanted to make sure that, that they were able to commemorate those men and for, so they never be forgotten. So, thank you, once again.
We thought Andrew had already done a lion's share of work. There's so, so much more to do. Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment at seven, 17. Any other comments from the Commission? I want to say thank you to Andrew for graciously getting the presentation of the Lopez de Lothar adobe in. There's a discrepancy between my documents, and I jumped right over it, running through at the beginning, but it was absolutely a wonderful thing to learn more about. Thank you very much. We don't need any motion on the report, just a review at this point, reviewing?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. In moving forward, potentially, one of the options that staff may utilize for some outreach meetings would be to take advantage of the Preservation Commission's meeting dates. So, potentially, that's one of the opportunities that staff is looking at. So, in the upcoming months, there may be some special meetings just so that we can use the opportunity to get the information out to the community.
Great, thank you. So, that brings us to staff items, number five on the agenda.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, for this item, staff is going to share the time with, with Jen, the city's architectural historian.
Thank you, Sam, and hello, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. I believe I'm to give an update for you on our progress with our CLG program. And last we talked, we were in the process of revising our historic preservation ordinance. And I'm very, very happy to report that we have concluded the review and the revision process with the State Office of Historic Preservation. So, that was just concluded really last week, and even the early part of this week, we're just finished. And I did want to share with you the comments from our staff member at the state who was assisting us with that, and, which is Shannon Lauschner-Pries. And by the end of this process, really, she's just overwhelmed with how much we've achieved in revising the ordinance and has a great, high level of confidence that the ordinance will now pass inspection by the National Park Service in order to be approved as a CLG. So, we, staff will be bringing that revised ordinance to you. Last time we talked, we had advised that we expected the next step to be, that we would be submitting that to the National Park Service for an informal look so that we could get their feedback before really taking the time to dig into it and take it through the city's process for approval. But the level of confidence that the state has now with our ordinance, really, the next step now is just to proceed with our own local process. I just don't think, we don't think we need that informal look any longer. So, that's great news. And so, Sam and I will be working to put together a plan to bring that to you for your review and for discussion and to answer questions, et cetera. And it'll go through the process here locally, and we'll be eventually on our way again with the CLG application. So, that's the update there. And Sam, if you would remind me if I have any other updates or items to talk about? Okay, thank you. And so you'll remember that the A project, potential project, came to you in an informal workshop several meetings ago. And this was for, the address was 607 Roses Road. It's the San Gabriel Cemeteries Project, where they acquired the adjacent property and are hoping to convert that to cemetery use. And that was received by you and comments offered. So I first became involved in the project in December 2021, and with staff visited the site, gave my, you know, walked through the site, gave my opinions and recommendations, and they embarked on a journey of having a survey done so they could understand the historic nature of the house. And that was reviewed by me and by staff. And ultimately, staff advised that the project needed to be taken through an environmental impact report process. The potential for impacts was recognized, and so it did need the full level of environmental review. And so that process is underway right now. We reviewed the first draft document in September 2023, and that has just been recently revised and resubmitted to the city and is actually on my desk now to review, hopefully, before the end of this week, and get comments back. And I'm sure we'll be following up with a meeting with the project team to just convey thoughts on that. So I'm not quite sure exactly what will be the next step other than probably some final revisions. It would be the hope, and then that would be brought to you as a project for your review. But I just don't know the timeframe yet, because I'm not sure what that review, this next review will bear. But you may expect to see that soon, and I would say probably, you know, maybe by summer. And that's all on my update, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. And sorry, I jumped right into that one. Happy to answer questions on the CLG update and that project update.
All right, so we'll go to questions, and I'll start with Commissioner DeRent.
Yeah, for the cemetery project, what kind of environmental impacts are you looking at? Do you have any comments on that?
Well, yes, I just don't want to, you know, comment too much on their findings in advance. Have you seen that report? But the project is proposing demolition, and so I can say that the technical study that, it's a technical study too, the EIR has identified significance for that property, a local significance, and also eligibility for the California Register. So those impacts are being further analyzed. The EIR includes an examination of feasibility and alternate projects, and that will all be well-analyzed and packaged up for your review. You know, and you'll be able to see that analysis when that time comes. But those, that's the level of significance, and that's what they're looking at.
So there were findings of historical significance to the property?
Yes, the technical report did make those findings, yes.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my questions are, you know, this, you know, I understand that, you know, we talked about that at the meeting, and there was, at this time, at that time, the findings weren't there for sure. But I had thought that we had, we had moved forward and, well, the discussion was that the, that the project was a, that the cemetery being a historical designation, and the commissioners here, I believe, we all discussed that, that this was a project that was, was deemed as something that would be great for the, for the community. I believe that the, because I live not too far from there, and the, that the community has been advised and that the owners of that property have gone through to have checked off all of the boxes of everything that they were supposed to do, neighbors. I know that they've had people over and showed them the plans, and it seems like the community in the area is, and I know that I am, you know, was, was behind this project as far as going forward. So I guess the, I guess my question is, is the, I mean, I know you're going to do a report, but the historical significance, can you give us any details as to what those are?
Sure. Yes, since this is an agendized item, we can take comments or listen to questions this evening, but the commission cannot deliberate on the project.
Anything else? Commissioner Weeks?
No, no further comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Urina?
No, no comment.
Commissioner Mahalo?
Thank you for that information, and we look forward to that agenda item.
I too am looking forward to learning more about the project. And when it comes to us, I would be interested in knowing what triggered the decision to have an EIR, because when it was presented to us, we, I think I was the one who said, "This really seems like a habs hair that we're looking at," sort of a final documentation before demolition. It wasn't something that was listed in the inventory that was done of sites by Architectural Resources Group. And so if we could have some clarification on how something that we all sort of saw as a foregone conclusion, that demolition that was a logical next step, what then triggered an EIR? And I think that my rationale has been a concern sort of throughout the process of things going through a staff review that we are not part of a discussion of. And I'm hoping that as we revise the ordinance and hopefully bring in more meeting dates, that the commission can be kept more abreast of some of these changes that happen in projects, because it's a little disconcerting to be out in the community and hearing things and not knowing that things have changed or why, and not being able to answer or give feedback. And so as we're looking at this, it would be helpful to have those, those types of questions answered in the report.
Yes, what staff can add is, as mentioned by Jen, we are working to finalize that report as part of the California Environmental Quality Act process. It will be made public for the public to review. There is a review and commenting period, and staff can send that directly to the commission to have that, as well as make it available on the website for, for public review and comments. Following that period, then a meeting date would be scheduled, so that would be the timing and the process for that project.
I guess just as a follow-up then, is there a mechanism by which, when there's a change in action that we've taken, where we were approving or giving comments on a project that was headed towards demolition and a new development, when things shift and an EIR is requested, is there a way we could ask commissioners to get an update, letting us know that status, as we have understood, has changed or that there's going to be more information on something that we provided comment on?
The process for that would be if, as part of commission comments, to have staff either put it on the agenda as an update or as a staff item, just like this evening, so that the commission can receive an update.
All right.
Can I make final, another comment? And how long will this process be? I feel like the, you know, this has been on the agenda for a long time, and I know that people want to get moving on this project, and it seems like if there's any way to speed this process along so that, you know, people can get moving on. I was able to tour the home, and to be frank with you, I mean, the house is in such disrepair right now, interior, that I feel like this process could be, could be moved a little bit more. I know people in my community are asking about it, you know, what's going on with that. We went to a party, we, not a party, I said, that's probably the wrong thing, you know. The community has expected this thing to move forward and everything else, and I feel like the owners of the cemetery, who I've become familiar with, because I walk through the cemetery every morning and everything, have been doing their due diligence on this, and I feel like this process should move a little bit quicker so the report can be analyzed by this group and then whatever other steps it has to go to from there, so.
Anything further? All right, thank you. So that brings us to Commissioner comments and conference meeting reports. So again, I'll go down the line. Commissioner DeRent?
No, nothing for me on that.
Commissioner Weeks?
No, no conference updates or reports.
Commissioner Urina?
No, no comments or reports.
Vice President Mahalo?
Nothing to report.
Well, I have a couple. I know that there's a survey out on budget priorities, and so I think perhaps, Sam, you can give some clarification on when those need to be articulated, but certainly, as active participants participate in the survey, that would be wonderful. I can think of all sorts of ways this commission could use some funding in the next budget cycle, particularly as we're looking at the identification of districts and being able to actually move this to the nomination process. So those are some, some things to be mindful of. I will always make announcements about some of the webinars and programs with the California Preservation Association, CPF Foundation. They always have really wonderful webinars if you want to continue your education in preservation. And then the last thing that I wanted to announce was that the San Gabriel Historical Association is having their speaker program this coming Monday. I believe Claros is providing dinner. But they are going to have the new police chief come and speak about the community, be a nice opportunity to make some connections and support their efforts. So those are my reports and notes. If there isn't anything further, then I will move to item 8, which is adjourning the Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource Commission meeting to the next meeting, scheduled on March 13th at City Hall, second floor, council chambers. I'll do that at 7:32.